Here.
Bryce Erlich. Joey Edwards.
Yeah.
Mubebu Wadia.
Here.
Jamie Seifer.
Here.
And County Commissioners, Commissioner March. Here. Commissioner Marcela. And.
Here.
Um, some changes and additions to the agenda. I think we had a couple.
Um, just, I think that a discussion we need that we'd like to add at the end of maybe. After final number three, we're just some discussions regarding processing. That's our current. So. What is adding number, I don't know, four for some outstanding discussion items regarding process.
Oh, under. Yes, and. And we have minutes to prove from May 2nd as well as May 9th. Everybody have a chance to review those minutes? And do I have a motion to approve?
Should we just do them? I'm sorry, I wasn't here on the 9th if.
Oh, sure, we can do them separate, yeah, do a motion for the second.
Um, yeah, I move, we approve the minutes for May 2nd.
So.
All in favor of approval of minutes for May 2nd, say aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? You abstained? Okay, and minutes for May 9th?
I'll move the minutes from May 9th and continue.
I'll second that motion.
They do have over. Um, okay, so. With Bryce. Captain. Your stuff. So we still have five. And Joey, so you still have one. Okay.
Never mind, take it back.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, we just need a second from an alma. Oh, yeah, well.
So you still have, you should, Joey, you were here on the 9th. So you made the motion, Abby, you were not here on the 9th. Um, we can appoint.
Okay, I can appoint Jamie here for this. Together, it's for accent. So if you'd like to still second it, we can keep you on.
Okay, thank you. I second Joey's motion.
Okay. All in favor of approval of May 9th minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And abstained? We have new business, the first is final 22-13, the Affordable Housing Incentives of the P U D Amendment. And I will hand the floor over to, well, actually, I need to do, we're out of that, right? Yes. I'm gonna read my opening statement and then we will hand the floor over to you. Lake County Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a joint public hearing. This statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made part of the record on these proceedings. The Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on the Land Development Code Amendment under section 3.8 of the Land Development, Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed amendment should be approved. In considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in section 3.8.9 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure to follow in this here, to be followed in this hearing will be as follows. Number one, members of the commission and/or the board will disclose if there's an ex parte communication. Two, the county staff will make an initial presentation. Three, the applicant may then make their presentation. Four, after that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Five, supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. Six, the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the planning commission and the board and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the commission will discuss in way the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then leave the meeting and the chair of the planning commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. One, approve the application with no conditions. Two, approve the application with recommended conditions. Three, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or four, deny the application. The planning director will make record of any substantial discussion on the motion and will include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement of motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form or substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I will now ask each planning commission member and then each county commissioner to please disclose if you've had any ex parte communications to disclose, and if so, please disclose them now. And I will just do that through local to make it easier. Heather Lynn, none. Howard Trix. Abby Dahlman.
None.
Joey Edwards.
None.
Mubebu Wadia.
None.
Jamie Seifer.
None.
Uh, Commissioner March? No, and, oh, this is legislative, so. But that's fine. I mean, we get that conversations about going into that, right? Yes, yeah. That is true. And so I guess I'm. Irrelevant, the ex parte communication, because this is legislative action, it's actually being brought forward by the staff. Some of this is not as inclusive. Um, county staff can now make their initial presentation, please.
Thank you all so much, and, um, as you mentioned, this is a staff driven code amendment that's being presented today to the planning commission. Commissioners through public hearing process. Um, this particular code amendment is a code amendment being brought forth to incentivize affordable housing options through the planned unit development process. The Southern Colorado Economic Development Corporation has been working with the city and the county through a planning grant with scope of work looked at ways to incentivize affordable housing workforce, housing, community housing oils. Basically, and DOLA has a list of qualified strategies. And these incentives are a different approach than the more regulatory punitive code of policy such as inclusionary zoning or impact fees. This list of incentives and choices that are being applied to the code are being brought forth as incentives. And so currently, the county's P U D standards recognize that, I mean, commission's ability to provide incentive, incentives for affordable housing. However, the current code lacks direction or definition to what types of waivers or incentives and commission could consider providing in exchange for developers providing affordable housing as part of the overall development. And I would say affordable housing as well as workforce housing. And so the way the code amendment is outlined is that first, there would be a new subsection under the Planned Unit Development Sketch Plan, some middle requirements that this sets the expectation for developers in looking and recognizing that there will be some middle requirements now within the planned unit development process at sketch talent. And there will also be a new approval, again, addressing these incentives. And then the next part, so those will both be code amendments, first to section, uh, 3.11.3. Um, C, and then again, at C is the small requirement. H is the approval criteria. Then we get into the actual development standards, and so this also then has a, um, under the section 6.1.2, this contribution to affordable housing, workforce housing. Um, addressing the countywide shortage of long-term affordable housing, workforce housing through a plan that may qualify the applicant for development incentives, which would include waivers, density bonuses, zoning dimensional standard waivers, or the right to apply for conditional use review for residential uses not otherwise allowed in the zoning for the P U D. And so, and then through that, we would also add under section 6.115, a new option O, um, that actually identifies a list of ways that in exchange for these incentives that a developer could, um, bring about the requirement outlined and spoke about any other new code added areas. Which they would be either a land dedication for the future construction of affordable housing to the county or the regional housing authority. Number two, the applicant to construct as, as no cost to county original housing authority de-restricted units as part of the P U D development that comply with the affordable housing guidelines. Number three would be the applicant is to construct at no cost to the county or regional housing authority de-restricted units as part of the P U D development that comply with the workforce housing definition. Number four, inclusion at no cost to the county or the regional housing authority of de-restricted units that provide long-term affordable housing through external funding sources such as state or federal housing programs. Number five would be de-restricted units built by an approved nonprofit or community land trust that have long-term affordability protections. And lastly, number six, other innovative affordable housing, workforce housing development proposals that have long-term affordability protections in place. And then through our work, um, sessions on the creation of this code amendment, the planning commission felt and the board felt that it was important to also recognize within the land development code, that workforce housing, something that isn't tied to an AMI base but is defined as de-restricted housing intended to serve residents of Lake County who meet eligibility criteria related to employment within Lake County. So that was the kind of, uh, what we have added in to the initial proposal that was before us as we worked through the work sessions, and that has been incorporated now into this, um, code amendment that is before the planning commission and the board today. So staff recommendation is, um, and, and staff brings this, working collaboratively with SCED in forming this code to bring the board to everyone today, recognizing the planning grant and qualified strategies that we are also trying to accomplish through this work. And so today, we are asking for you to review the code amendment, provide any comment or revision, and then to make a recommendation of approval to the board of commissioners. Um, staff has provided a review of the approval criteria. I think it is good to mention that any code amendments need to have this approval criteria applied to it to make sure that it is consistent with the, with the code and that. So those four items are that A, excuse me, those three items. A, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies and other provisions of the top plan and the land development code. And staff has provided favorable compliance with all of the listed goals from the top plan that's outlined within the staff report. That the proposed amendment is necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts or other social or economic conditions. I would say that's at the heart of why this is being brought before the planning commission and the board today. And that this proposed amendment will promote the public health, safety, and welfare, general welfare of the community. And again, um, I think these findings are relatively easy to be found in the intent behind this code amendment. I have provided, staff has provided a recommended motion for approval, a conditional motion, as well as the motion for denial included in the packet. So I would love to introduce also Michael Yurman. He is on Zoom, and Michael has been go in helping staff, land use staff, in bringing this code amendment to you today. And Michael provides support in all things housing, um, right now through the planning grant work. So if this wouldn't be as far along without his collaboration on it, so thank you so much. Any questions for either Michael or myself? And to turn it over to you for public comment.
Yeah, I think most anyone has some new agreeing questions, I'll start with public comment first. Um. And I don't, nobody mentioned here in the room that they wish to speak, but do we have any members on Zoom or in the room that have anything that they would like to add and or questions that they may have on this proposed code amendment? On Zoom, feel free to raise your hands, um, or unmute. Um, I don't see anybody either. Therefore, does planning commission or county commissioners, if they have any questions, um, comments that they want to make on this, and I think a chapter. I bet some of them just.
I have a, I have a question or comment I wanted, so. And maybe we need to do this separately because we're really trying to hit the DOLA requirements. But, um, I guess I, I'm still interested, like, because I read everything in that section, oh, 6115, oh. It all, every single one still refers to like de-restricted or affordable. I'm so interested in, or certainly one question, I'd be open to a P U D discussion with a developer where we contemplated incentives for market rate housing, but that still was built at a, you know, lower than median price or, you know, built at a place that was still accessible or, you know, relatively low AMI. I don't know what that means these days. Wage and housing market, but, you know, so I don't think, I don't think everything solving our housing problem has to be de-restricted or, you know, in, in, or subsidized. You know, I really want the market to help fill some parts of that inventory. So I guess I, and I'd be interested whether there's a place like another, you know, phrase of, yeah, something like, you know, market rate that is, you know, lower than, you know, recent median sales price or operated the market at, you know, some range of AMI. And, and to my mind, I mean, give someone less incentive.
Sure.
Than if it was deeply subsidized or the land was donated. But I still think there's a way step by some incentive through our community association to bring market rates up.
So on number six under there, um, I think that was kind of the intent of that was to give us the option for something more creative, but maybe because the word, you know, because the definition of affordable or because it's saying long-term, you know.
Yeah.
So maybe we need to just reword that, any, uh, not, um, other innovative housing development proposals that. Like sustainable housing for Lake County residents, like, I don't know, something along those lines so that you're taking out the, so that we're not trying to define the affordable. I mean, the problem is that affordable is such a big word, and it really could be here and still be what you're talking about.
Um, I feel like someone reading affordable and workforce is going to assume.
De-restriction or something.
I add on the de-restricted piece real quick. So the one thing to remember is that deed restrictions, when normally when we hear that, we, we associate that immediately with a price cap or something along those lines. You know, a deed restriction could be as simply as limiting as that they must be a full-time, you know, the house is occupied, it's a permanent resident. So that's a deed restriction light. And so I think, Jeff, that that allows for that, so maybe, um, and one thing we might consider is actually defining deed restriction so that we don't run across this, so that we can put in that whole kind of spectrum of how a house could be deed restricted. And then that, that allows for that, what Christopher Fiedler was just discussing, um, which is to kind of, to go on the deed restriction light side of things. Uh, if, if so, if, if that's the desire of the developer, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so maybe tweaking that, that paragraph six specifically, so this, after some of that, like, you know, maybe anyway, you know, not, um, not combined with the Lake County Affordable Housing Guidelines. You know, make sure it's different than like what's said in two, three, and four.
And, uh, Jamie, uh, are you commenting on this specific topic, topic? Or do you have your hand raised for another question?
Uh, no, my, my question was related to how we're making definitions.
Okay, so I'll come to you in just a second, I just, to continue on this conversation real quick. My, the deed restricted part, I agree that we could have the restrictions several ways. But I agree that number five for de-restricted, as well as number six, they still tie into that they also have long-term affordability protection, which to me says that more, that it's more tied to AMI than it is. So maybe it's a matter of. I mean, I almost think the other, number six should almost just be way more general because you guys can decide, we all can decide based on what it, what proposal they're giving us, if it's something we want to offer incentive of.
Yeah, I mean, again, just to put myself in the shoes of the developer, reading this and kind of understanding what it means. I would like the phrase, yeah, I, I mean, just throw it out there for discussion, but I, I'd like the phrase like, you know, sort of comma and potentially including market rate. You know, building at more accessible levels or something like that. Just, I, I just think a phrase market rate should be in there to really figure in someone's mind. It doesn't have to go go through what's laid out in the other paragraphs. And maybe that's the wrong phrase to you, but like something.
I'm not sure that I would use market rate, Michael, like.
Yeah. I, I think, I think you lose your, the, Commissioner Fiedler, you gotta be real careful that, that long-term protection is in place, because that's, that's why you're, you know, that's the, that's like the quick per quo that you're giving as far as these incentives. I understand what you're trying, I understand what you're saying. Uh, well, I'm really brainstorming here, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quiet for a second, let's listen to some other comments. But I understand, I, I get what you're saying. I do think the other piece in there allows for that creative, but maybe we need to be a little bit more.
Maybe it does, I mean, the number six, maybe, um, I think within even the qualified strategies, there is, you know, like a creative option, and I can't think of that wording right now, Michael, but maybe, you know, how even in the qualified strategies there, they use some language about creative options. Um, maybe nearing something more similar to that.
I was.
I'm looking, I'm looking at it right now, and I'll be right back, yeah.
Okay.
Hold on.
Quick comment, I think, I think that's also kind of what we would anticipate to see from a development plan is, um, oftentimes, they want to build something at or near market rate, and then this is, so I, I guess I wouldn't think that we necessarily need to accommodate um, that within this language, um.
Because. I think that Jeff is, is looking to try to kind of, you know, to hit that missing middle part um, more than, than promoting market rate. I think it's more trying to, um, make sure that there aren't gaps in, in the solution.
Yeah, and by market rate, I'm not saying like at, like last month's median sales price. Like, I think there's, there's stuff.
Which would be construed as market rate, so I think that's why we probably take use that term, but I agree with, I know what you're saying. And I think that that's where Sarah, you were.
I was just gonna say, I think I also have on my list, like defining de-restrictions and the breadth, the wide breadth of what all those cover. Because it could be, right, like, it could be like playing a building envelope, or it could be, uh, owner occupied, which I think is maybe on the lesser. It's scary.
And like deed restriction light versus.
Yeah.
Scary.
Which is kind of allowing you to do more market rate, but then that's maybe hopefully we get a little bit more of those. There are a couple of different markets getting created. Um, so I feel like defining or giving the menu of what deed restrictions could be, like. I might be like a part two to this.
The examples of the restrictions without, just to set the tone. Whether the restriction lives or, I guess, the, having that breadth in there would make people thinking of a lot.
So I would, I would also just, you know, kind of bring your attention to that the list of actions the intent is to give the ability for land, the, or things that do meet that the affordable housing guidelines, things that meet the workforce housing definition, which was important. Um, when we have like a live tech project, that's number four. Number five is when we want to have those private partnerships, like community land trusts or, um, it's something different. And so then number six would try, is trying to capture everything we're all saying.
So yeah, so it's all about numbers.
You know, so number six is just trying to capture exactly the heart of what you all.
Well, and I think there's going to be new creative ideas happening in communities. Um, I think that's why you need number six to be general, to allow us the option to see those come before us, you know? Go ahead, whoever was going to speak.
Sorry, the chat is disabled, is there a way to, sorry to bring this up. Um, I would, we provided a definition of the B O C C under the guidelines of deed restriction. So if I can paste that in here, I'm happy to do that.
I'll work on that.
Sorry.
No problem. So if we can tweak number six to, to make sure that everybody feels that it's general enough to allow somebody to bring us something creative, I mean, I almost like the idea of, I know innovative, but like, even adding the word creative, like, to say, bring us your idea of what you think you can do to help solve our housing issue. And I don't know, you know, and I think keeping the term and not putting even, even the word de-restricted in number six is great because who knows what kind of idea that they have. Um. I feel like it's pretty general, other than maybe the very, uh, the last piece might sound a little too, uh.
Yeah, because the, the word protections makes me think that it has to.
Yeah, it has to be, so maybe it's just other creative, innovative, affordable workforce housing development projects.
Yeah.
Like, just leave it ended at proposals.
So the, the incentive, the DOLA incentive, um, they use that meet critical housing needs in the local community.
Oh, that, that sounds good.
Meet critical housing needs in the community.
Local community.
Yeah. Yeah. Focuses it back. Yeah.
So other innovative, um, affordable housing work, or should just be other innovative housing development proposals that meet critical housing needs in the community.
Yeah.
Other innovative. Okay, I've got it pretty much. We have any other comments or questions on that, or, oh, and Jamie, on definitions?
Thanks, Heather. Um, and thanks to staff for putting together this report. I agree, it kind of sounds like we're at a vague enough to be acceptable place. Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the conversation last week on these housing guidelines. But my question was regarding the Lake County Affordable Housing Guidelines, kind of, who owns that? And then how are we checking all of these numbers against that? And is that like sufficient to allow for as much creativity as we would want? And is that like sufficient to, uh, allow for as much creativity as we would want in the future? Does that question make sense?
Yes.
Yep, can I, anyone, let me take that one real quick?
Go ahead, Michael.
You know, I think the one update that I was gonna give on your staff report beyond, um, what you gave, which was great, is that the, the update is that the commissioners and the council are moving towards the creation of a regional housing authority, which I think is a huge step, um, in that, that one of the powers that is being delegated is that they will submit um, a written statement on a project like a PUD that comes in with an affordable housing, um, uh, proposal uh, at sketch plan. Um, and so that regional housing authority also has the authority to, um, to enforce the community guidelines. So they are the administrating body, and then the executive director would be, um, the person who makes any, um, administrative decisions. And they can be appealed through a grievance committee, which is made up of a most likely, it's still being TPD, but most likely a city council member, BSC member, and a, and a, a community member at large.
Perfect. Do we have anybody in the chat that has questions that?
Uh, it's amazing if they have access to any post.
Abby, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, it seems like this probably came up, um, looking at the minutes when I was out, um, at the last meeting, but I was just curious, kind of station around that workforce housing definition, if you spoke to, um, like, uh, I think it, I think it does say, does it say employment, um, within Lake County specifically?
Yes, yes.
I, I was just, just given, you know, kind of the makeup of, um, you know, workers going to other valleys and, and down valley. Um, just wondering if we could, if you guys could tell me what you, how the discussion went, or how you came to that? Or if Michael has examples from other entities or jurisdictions that, um, you know, kind of have regional, uh, employment bases.
Okay, I would just mention, I'll, I'll turn it to, uh, to, to Michael to answer that as well, but I just want to make sure that this doesn't, this isn't, these options don't preclude, um, people that, that live in Lake County and work outside of the county. Those would be covered within, um, the, uh, tiers within the Affordable Housing Guidelines that Michael can speak to. Um, this adds another item in, so the original proposal, um, just, uh, followed the guidelines. And session with the board and planning commission, they felt that it was, um, uh, very important to have some non-AMI-based, um, workforce, um, be defined, being assigned as working within Lake County. Um, but they also, the, the community guideline speaks to residents of Lake County that work outside of, of the community, and I think that's been really well vetted through the community guideline work, so Michael.
Yeah. Cause in here, it defines, I'm just looking. It says workforce or guidelines. So that's a, yeah, that's a great question, because the guidelines actually have a tiered system in which allows for commuters. But it prioritizes, like, the first tier would prioritize. I could, we could share the tiers, uh, here in a second, I can put it in chat too. But the first tier is the, um, our Lake County-based employees, and then it goes to a Lake County resident. So that Lake County resident commuter would qualify under the community guidelines. So some, if a developer was proposing something that allowed for a Summit County employee, for instance, this, that would be allowed to be under the consideration of workforce housing, by the, by the planning commission. That makes sense?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I guess, so, so somewhere in our code, or, or it would be a reference to the community guidelines, it wouldn't live necessarily in, in our development code.
It, it is in the development code, so if you read the section, it says, "Community Guidelines or Workforce Housing."
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Any other questions or?
Um, I have mostly like some mechanical and specific language things, like are in the proposed amendment. The first one listed, the applicant is applying for Affordable Housing, Workforce Housing Incentives. Are they actually applying for, are they requesting in their application? And because, um, like words like that, the applicant actually applying for. Say a list of the incentives, is the list meant to be in that one thing there?
Um, no, it's just, just to get on the same page. So, um, in, in which section?
The first, one, one.
So the incentives including density, velocity, design, dimensional standards, waivers, or the right to apply those, those are. Is that the list that we're talking about? Is that exhaustive of all?
Yes, well.
Like, if there are other opportunities, these are the, these are the incentives that live within pretty much any PUD.
Right, right.
And so if someone were to come in and bring something else that makes more sense to incentivize them, um, then that could be, I mean, that's already built into a PUD process, right?
So I wonder just if we, like specifically here though, can just kind of like tweak the language a little bit to say we're not limited to things like, yada, 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 you know, everything we have here. Um, but I, I would, sorry, Anne, for the first comment, I mean, it says, where an applicant is applying for Affordable Housing workforce housing incentives, can we just, shouldn't applying really be requesting, like, in their community? Where you're requesting this consideration, and all these other things happen?
I think you're.
PUD is a, an application.
An application.
PUDs and applications, I feel like that's just part of that.
Yeah.
It's, it's a requirement, so it's referring to the applications. Okay, I just, I just didn't want it to be like a separate, in, being heard as a separate process.
No, that's why it's, it's within the schedule requirement, so.
Okay. Okay, um, and I think maybe, and I'm sorry, because I was trying to do some technical stuff, and if Abby has a question about definition of workforce with affordable. Cause you have to talk about the affordable housing, and then you.
Right, because the community guidelines, we, I mean, we can we could define, um, affordable community guidelines, um, we can define that um, as being the community guidelines that are administered by the regional housing authority. I mean, if, if you feel there's, um, a need to define it, it, it's not administered and at work and regulated by, um, through the land development code, but through the regional housing authority. I guess it's just kind of a, whereas the workforce housing is something that's divined through the planning uh, or through the land development code, and it's separate from the guidelines, that's why there's additional definition there. But pointing to the guidelines that are kept within and administered housing authority, that's why there is no definition of others. Am I explaining that in a
Um, yeah, no, I get it, I think that that, like, the workforce housing is a little easier to find, or would that what we talked about earlier, including that, like, looks good for the local.
You know, and I don't think it's a bad idea, looking at that workforce housing definition. I, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to add the additional allowance for, we might point to the community guidelines, just add clarity there, or the tiers. Um, I understand the, the question there, it's not, it's not a bad one, because if you read, if you read, if you did a literal interpretation of workforce housing, it would just limit to like county-based employees. And certainly, we've heard that comment over and over through our housing discussions. Um, so we could either add in there Lake County-based employees, or, um, we've done it in the way that, um, or workers from adjacent, or workforce from adjacent, um, counties. We could add that in, like that, I think that's an easy way of doing it. Or we could add, uh, add in the, uh, community guidelines into the workforce housing definition, which I think is a little less clear. That makes sense?
Yeah, I just, I just think it's worth, like, simply defining or delineating workforce housing from affordable housing, and not just saying it's affordable and workforce, as if we, those are interchangeable. That's how we kind of talk about it sometimes. Um, but that's not necessarily what we mean, I don't think it has to give the.
You're saying, you're not questioning the workforce housing definition, you're questioning the fact that we don't have an affordable housing definition.
Or guidelines, or the guidelines.
A lot.
Do you want the guidelines to point to like where you are? The definition? I think maybe if I could try to simplify even more, like, go through this document, because sometimes it has affordable slash workforce, or it has affordable guidelines and workforce guidelines. And just, let's just stay consistent in this draft, because I don't mean, include both of the things.
Does that definition limit who's able to make a, uh, ask? Like Commissioner Mudge, I'm curious if that changes who we think the current code would allow? Like, they would just tell us which one they're trying to
Yeah.
make, right?
Right, right.
So either one doesn't, doesn't change that, if I understand correctly?
Either.
Ha- having, having the language be either way, they would show up and say, hey, I have an affordable project, or I have a workforce project.
Right.
E- 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 either one is fine with us, right?
So I would think that they would come and say, the affordable housing, um, we have an affordable housing, will be the affordable housing, my criteria within the PUD process, we're going to address it through the affordable housing guidelines, or we're going to address it to workforce housing, or we're going to address it with one of these other incentives. So the itemized list, to me, makes them kind of, is where you draw out. A little, some of them are only applicable to affordable, some of them can be applicable to workforce, so I think that's why it's.
Yeah, the, the, I think you guys are picking up on, this is how it's different than inclusionary zoning, this code amendment, in that it's a incentive, and you don't want to be prescriptive. Um, and that's the issue, I under- I understand that, yeah, because I understand as being a plant, planning commissioner, you want to have prescriptive code to, to apply to this. What I think this does, though, is by having both those, those terms in there, it allows, because it's not prescriptive, it allows you, you as a planning commissioner to weigh a subsidized unit that a developer is actually constructing versus a land dedication, uh, and how much you're willing to incentivize those kind of units versus other kind of units. And I think it'll come over time, um, as you see different land development applications. But again, that's, that's a difficulty, I, I, I understand where DOLA is going with this, this thought process of trying to get away from um, punitive codes, uh, that, that are in, in different languages. But the, that, that, that does kind, it gets away from what we're used to in a prescriptive code, uh, where you want to be able to say to an applicant with surety, here's what you need to do X, Y, and Z to get this incentive. So, it, that is the difficulty here. Commissioner Mudge, I was gonna ask you, do you, do you think that having a definition of both workforce and affordable um, or combining the definition, that it just speaks to permanent residency and, um, and that they, uh, work in a, in Lake County or, uh, adjacent community?
And, you look, I don't think I'm trying to get that in depth, on page two, three point eleven point three H eight. That is the affordable housing component of a proposed PUD, affordable housing slash workforce housing plan shall, and I also think it should say maybe reflect, not comply, with the Lake County Affordable Housing Guidelines. And then it says the workforce housing component of a proposed PUD, affordable housing, workforce housing plan shall comply or reflect the workforce housing as defined within this code. Is that not, am I reading that wrong, or is that not confusing?
It's a PUD workforce, their plan, so that's their PUD Affordable Housing Workforce Housing Plan. That shall comply with the Lake County Affordable Housing Plan, which is its own thing.
Pretty, that's, it says it should comply with the guidelines, which change.
Right.
Per, which I think is why we don't want it. And, right, so I, I think it should reflect them, not necessarily comply with the guidelines.
Something to comply with one or the other, or, uh, if, if, if they choose that, if they choose that from the list, right? If they choose, um, through their option, um, of, uh, of the approval criteria, this is an approval hi- criteria, so it must comply, because this is, I mean, remember what section of the code that this is in. And so whatever incentive, or whatever, uh, method to bring about the incentive that they choose of the one through six, this is just saying, if they've chosen the path of compliance through the guidelines, they must comply with that, if they've chosen, I don't remember, like, three, then make them the, the workforce. If they've come up with something different, then it, it's just saying that they're going to, um, the criteria has been met for them to apply for whichever option that they've chosen. So there's, there's several different paths of compliance. Have to comply with one of those, but, and so if you've chosen that, then it can find that.
I think, I mean, I think the, when the word comply is right, I mean, my understanding from discussions about the community guidelines is that those are sort of like a starting point, in a way, that every development is gonna have its, you know, like, might diverge depending on the requirements of where they're bringing financing in from, so I think we might need to pick a slightly more flexible word than apply.
But remember what, what this code, what the code amendment that we're doing, doesn't, right? You're looking at your, your land development, and there, and everything has criteria associated with, that you've checked that box. So now we have said, here are the incentives, and here's the path that you choose to, to give these incentives, right? So you have to be able to check that, in order to get the incentive, you apply with one of those six items, right? And so it's not so much in the mechanics of the guidelines, it's not so much in the mechanics of, of, of that creative thing, we're coming back to our land development, um, code, where we have to make findings that no matter what process we're doing, we have approval criteria. And so we have to say, yes, we've met this, and we're that, we need they have become compliant with our approval criteria in order to have taken those incentives. So just to clarify, because I think this is where the confusion is. It's reflected, the community guidelines is spelled out in six point one point one five. So those are, that's, oh, right, those are the things we just talked about, like, items one through six. So you're saying that their plan has to comply with one of those six items? And so I think comply is the correct word, because you're, you're referring, and if we need to refer the section after that word, maybe, and then after the word guidelines, up there, but like, that's what we're.
So are those six our guidelines, land use, or land, affordable housing guideline?
So the six, okay, so maybe in terms of the community. Okay, so section three are, we're in PUD, so section three is our process for PUD. And so you have supplemental requirements, and you have approval criteria, and that doesn't matter if you are major. And that doesn't matter if you are major subdivision or conditional use permit. Chapter three is where our supplemental requirements are and our. Uh, approval criteria. Then we go to chapter six, as we all know, we bounce back and forth through the code, and number six are. Is our plan due to met development standards. And so we're going to get into the specifics in six of how you gain approval in the outline process. So um, six is definitely where the standards to grant those incentives are. So we're going back and forth between two different sections in the code.
But another question I'm confused on is when, when, like in six, one fifteen oh, it says, you know, shall comply with the Lake County Affordable Housing Guidelines. My brain read that as, those are the community guidelines that the housing authority will.
Okay, okay, so yeah, understanding that that's.
Not, not one through six.
Correct, correct, that's.
So, wait, so correct, correct.
That is correct. So the six point one point two are just like lighting standards and design criteria. Um, now we have you, um, here are the, the standards that you must meet within a PUD. And you have to contribute to an affordable housing or workforce housing.
And I think the question that was, the title, Lake County Affordable Housing Guide Line. What are those? Who owns that? Okay, so those are a community.
So then I think comply is just the wrong word. I think it should be like something like, the, the incentive, you know, the incentives will be proportional to the degree that you meet that. Sorry, I know you're like freaking out.
No, 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 but I think.
It should be the same title.
Yes.
Just clean that.
Right, yeah.
Be, be, because again, my understanding is just like those, those, those will be the starting point for any negotiation of an affordable housing. Development, and they're, they're not locked in, you know, set in stone. Because different financing sources will have their own requirements that are going to force us to diverge.
So, Michael, you did oh.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I understand this shall, I'm, I'm reading through all this.
Okay.
The, the, the issue is in six one fifteen oh, this shall comply with the Lake County, this shall comply is the issue. They, what I am.
Also exists in three eleven, yeah.
Yeah, the three, but real quick, I'll be, address oh, section first, and then we can get to the three eleven. I don't think, so real quick, I think you have to look at how they relate to each other here. Because it shall comply is what, is the correct way to state that, because. If they're going to get waivers, they shall comply with one of the six options below, right? They're not required, they're not required to in six point one two I. To contribute to workforce housing unless they want these waivers. So it's, it's, it's a, basically, the shall comply piece is saying. I, I understand where the confusion here is, but you're only having to comply if you're asking for the waiver, the incentive.
But every PUD can ask for a waiver.
Sorry?
Every PUD is going to ask for a waiver.
I understand that, but these, okay. I understand.
But that's the whole point, is that we know that you can comply, you know, that these are, these are incentives. This isn't Karen instead of a, of inclusionary zoning area, but these, but there are. So maybe it shall be that the affordable housing plans, the PUD affordable housing plan shall comply with. One of the following, um, the, or shall comply with, um.
I think you can say shall comply with something that's flexible.
It shall, so it shall reflect, the proposal should reflect all of these things. And the approval, and the approval of that, it shall comply with whatever is determined. Right, so I'll admit that in the very beginning, I thought you were getting a move on us, but I don't. So the Lake County Affordable. I, I think my problem with tying our code to those guidelines is we don't have, we don't control those guidelines.
And they will change per project.
And they'll change, they can't, they could change, right?
But they, those are adopted.
Approved projects based on guidelines that we don't control.
I, 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 I feel like the guidelines would be like a baseline, and any project will do, may diverse from them. And then I, I think we would adjust our incentive. Based on, I mean, I mean, a project coming with like a better, lower AMI, and you might give them more incentive. I mean, likely it's going to be.
So I think that the, the six point one point one five just needs to be affordable housing plans. And that it, and that the PUD plan. Take out affordable housing plan, the PUD plan shall comply with one or more of the following. And leave it like that, and take out everything else. So instead of affordable housing plan, it should be the PUD plan. They've got affordable housing, shall comply with the Lake County, oh, nope. Um, shall comply, take out everything after comply, um. And so, um, with one or more of the following. So delete everything from after the PUD. And then it should say the PUD plan shall comply with one or more of the following. And take out all of the with the Lake County Affordable Housing Guidelines, designated, amended all of them, yes, they need. So I understand that comply because they're going to be amended. But I think the whole point is that they do have to comply with one of the six.
One of our six.
Yeah, and one of the six can be created, um, uh, development proposals that need critical housing needs community to address. The previous concerns, I think my suggestion would be six point one fifteen oh reads. Affordable housing plans, the PUD plan shall comply with one or more of the following.
Okay.
Yeah. But, but then, sorry, but then we still have, like in two, we still have comply with the Lake County Affordable Housing Guidelines. And it needs to address whether comply is the right word.
Well, I think that if you choose number two, you're then going to comply with the affordable housing guidelines at the time that you come before. The, so I think it is comply, so it's not going to be, like, in the future, things might change. So at the time of your application, if you choose number two and you've checked number two, then you're currently complying with, it's an active. That you're complying at the time of application, then you have an option to do number six.
But, well, so maybe I just like missed her, but I've, I've heard multiple times from like Jackie and Michael and like other presentations had on. Guideline, and that is if they are, guide, they're like a starting point. Like if we had all the money and we were doing it, we'd do it this way. But other developers are going to do it different ways. I think I've heard that like multiple times. So how, so, so I just don't want to write it in a way.
Then, so then I, my, my, I, I still think, yeah, Michael, um, but I, I, I still think that you are still complying with them if you hit. Within, even if it's a grace, then you should go ahead, but I, I think.
Yeah, I think number six, that you have, you have multiple ways in here that are outside, and you're hitting your point. You don't have to choose number two or number, you won't, you don't have to, you're not bound by, these aren't cumulative. These are, you know, you can pick one of the six.
Hi, Jamie.
Thanks Heather, I, I just want to agree with Ann, and I think to Commissioner Feedler's point that they have to comply with this. They can choose to comply with this, and to your point of these guidelines as a starting point, that's exactly that. They can stay, per number two, I want to start here and I am choosing to make this application. In response to the guidelines. And that's one of many choices that they have, but this, this allows them to use that as the baseline that you're talking about. And if they don't want to comply with that, they choose another one of the options.
Go to the capital since.
Okay. Got it, Mark? A little bit more.
Uh, I just, well, the, like, can we just refer to the affordable housing definition as, as, or our affordable housing definition is? Uh. First to the community guidelines or?
Oh, sure, add another definition within chapter nine that defines affordable housing.
Or that just, yeah, or that just steers people to.
Affordable housing, um, a definition that, that basically like county affordable housing guidelines. Are, where they're located. I, I would think more about the definition for that.
Yeah, I think we can, we can certainly come up with a definition for that, and I just put in the chat to, um. To address, to address Abby's comment on the definition, adding in the adjacent. Uh, county, or an adjacent county to that definition. I did add permanent residents of Lake County, um, because that, that eliminates the. Um, remote worker who comes from California. Um, so I think that, that's important, that you had the permanent resident piece, if you're going to allow for the adjacent county. That means, you know, permanent resident, it means you pay, normally means you pay income tax in Lake County. State income tax. That's where you file.
So are you, um, for, I'm trying to modify these changes of the definition. So is that under workforce housing intended to serve permanent residents of Lake County?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's if you scroll down a little bit further, and on that screen, um, it's about another half a scroll down. There it is. Right there.
Um. Well, so. So this may be, and I guess this would be another piece of that conversation, is, um. I felt like when we were talking about adding workforce housing, the idea behind adding workforce housing was that. We do have an employment shortage in Lake County because so many people work over the hill, and. We are not getting cooperation from laboring communities for helping address the affordable housing issues. So having a developer who came to us with the ability to house some of our Lake County employees. Would be incentive to keep people working in Lake County. Um, so I personally don't want to see it change from having to do with Lake County employment. Um, because I think the other six items address plenty of housing, um, affordable ideas. For the community as a whole, um, but I think there's a missing piece for. Um. We have eight thousand people that live in this county and we can't keep workers in town. And that's a really good deal to me as much as housing is, so. I personally don't want to see that definition change, but into other people's.
I think Jackie had put in the chat just about the, the tiers, so those folks are towards the bottom with.
Well, and those, if those would be through the guidelines and not through workforce, so we. Definition to address outside of those guidelines. So the guidelines are, um, affordable housing guidelines are one of the options. Workforce housing, this definition of workforce housing is meant to address exactly. Um, the goal that Heather communicated, that was kind of shared. And, and, um, an opinion that came through the work sessions of creating a workforce housing that didn't have an I A L I base. And, um, was, had an eligibility of, um, live and work permanent residents.
So, just in practicality, how that, how that actually works is that the, that the lot or the unit that's created through the PUD. Will actually have a legal mechanism, which is a deed restriction, that is basically approved at final approval that lives with that lot. Or property in perpetuity. And I think as the planning commission sees that in the final plan approval. That's where you're able to weight your decision on the waivers, et cetera. Um, pretty heavily on, on the way they worded deed restriction. So there, there is a, there is, this does allow, and my counter on this is. This could allow for the planning commission to say, like, say the developer says we're going to do five units. Um, the, the planning commission could say, of those five, we want two to be Lake County-based employees in the, in the deed restrictions. So, um, but I do also understand the, um, Lake County comment. And it did come up, it was a pretty robust discussion between the council and the VSCC about the commuters, and that's why we did the tiers.
I thought that you were saying to, to remove employment in Lake County and place that work. Oh, no, I, I think just adding, I, I think actually the request was to add in, um, just sort of permanent residents.
Oh, I see.
So just to supplement the, um, definition, but to lead and put everything like. Right, Michael?
Yes.
Right, yeah, right, intended to serve permanent residents of Lake County.
Whoever's reluctant first in the ring, come on. I have a question for Michael. Um, Michael, on the page two, we're under three eleven three. And it says the planning commission, and I think we should just add in, sorry, the, the last part of that paragraph. The planning commission, and I might suggest adding N V S C C. Shall take in, to consideration the proposed ratio of affordable housing, workforce housing units to the total number of units in the application. And the suitability for development. Uh, and the adequacy of facilities for affordable housing, workforce housing units on any land proposed for dedication. Are we going to, the first one in my head relates to kind of that penciling out of, of that. Development, how can we, how will we actually be measuring that as a, as this decision?
Well, I think the short answer is it, it's kind of a, a wait and see. Um, unfortunately, because again, this, it, again, it's, it's hard to do. I think, I think Dola is on the right track in some respects, but it's also, it's counterintuitive to the way code works. Um, but I think what you, what you wind up with is certain precedents as you move forward. Over the years of seeing applications and being able to wait. The different decisions that you made on different applications on, based on their ratios and the, um. What was given for certain incentives in the past. Um, I think, I think time will tell, and I also think that as a community evolves. Um, those, the weight of that will be, um, will be kind of a judgment call as you proceed. I also think that certain places where there, you can go into the second thing where you can have. Increased density, i.e. like if it's able to connect to, uh, uh, sand or wastewater system. Where you're able to increase density, those are the types of decisions versus a, you know, something that's on a septic, where you're getting a lot, maybe. Those are the considerations that, so I don't think it's going to be apples to apples. Um, anytime you see this, I think it's, what it's really trying to do is to say to a developer, hey, you come to us and tell us. Based on your, on number of units that you're, you're proposing, where your ratios are and, and, um. How can, how can we work with you on, on some waivers if you're going to provide this amenity to the community? Does that make sense? Again, I understand, I understand the not being prescriptive here, it's kind of opposite of what we always tell, tell planning commissions in code.
And Sarah, I would just add, if you read, um, the sentence before, you know, the planning commission shall take into consideration. Is referring to the planning commission's authorized to recommend, recommend to the board of county commissioners. So it, it.
We're not taking into consideration these things in order to do.
It's not excluding the board and considering those things, it's that the planning commission is authorized to make recommendations to do in Lake.
Yeah, no, I just, I just, I think, I think hearing that from Michael, that is kind of a screwed thing. And, and we will have to wait and see how that first one is actually. Uh, assessed or evaluated by the planning commission and staff and, and the board is just. Uh, I just wanted to say that out loud about that first one, the ratio, um, because you could have a five unit development. And they're offering one, which is a great ratio. Or you can have a 200 and they're offering five, which is, you know, I mean, I mean, it's kind of, I guess, in my opinion, it's like a condition. Right. It depends on what somebody's doing. It depends on how they're impacting. It depends on so many things that every single application is going to be different. We're going to have to make the judgment call as to whether the ratio is good enough. I don't know. I, yeah, I don't want to define it. I just think that we have had a conversation. Find that and then maybe like 25% or something.
Right, right, right.
And it really doesn't, you know, apply it. I just wanted to highlight that a little bit. And then the second one for suitability, I wonder, like Michael said, it, it might be beneficial to act to say whether or not you're developing in existing boundaries and or considering that kind of. Or do you all think that just the suitability?
Base for that conversation to have and that's the intent of it, but putting those in to make sure that there's a focus.
I have a process question about referring to the housing authority. We don't yet have.
That's why, yeah, that's why we added county or.
Okay. I don't think I realized that it was county or in every.
You have a question or comments? I want to make a motion to close public hearing on application twenty-two dash thirteen. This is the easy motion. Wait a second. I'm in favor of closing public hearing on file twenty-two dash thirteen. Hi.
Hi.
Uh, any opposed? I would suggest if planning commission prefers that we table the discussion on, on this in motion and we move on to the public hearing for file twenty-three dash fourteen, so that commissioners can stay in the room. And then we can close them.
Yeah.
All three at the same time.
A suggestion.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item number two, which is file twenty-two dash fourteen, conditionally adding ADUs to the business zoning. I'm going to read my statement again during this file. I guess I'm into, right? Well, I'm going to, I'm going to read it. Lake County Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners, the last step, the joint public hearing. This statement I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made part of record on these proceedings. Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction to conduct a joint public hearing on the Land Development Code Amendment under section three point eight of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the amendment should be approved. In considering the matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in section three point eight nine of the Lake County Land Development Code. Procedure will be as followed. Members of the commission. County staff will make an initial presentation. The applicant may then, well, we are the applicant. After that, any persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the commission and the board. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless cleared by the chair. The applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. Parties and witnesses are asked not to, not to submit redundant, irrelevant or cumulative evidence. At the conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close evidentiary portion of the hearing, AKA public hearing, and the commission will discuss in way the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will then lead the meeting and the Chair of the Standing Commission will entertain a motion on the application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. Approve the application with no conditions, approve the application with recommended conditions, approve the application with newly identified conditions, or deny the application. Planning Director shall make record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the recommendation of the commission. The commission's recommendation will be in the form of a statement in motion. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or the form or substance of these previous proceedings? Okay, very nice.
Thank you. And to do, and helping me with. My share, she, that, thank you. That was really helpful. Unless, thank you so much. So file number twenty-two fourteen is a code amendment to add accessory drawing units to the business zone district. They are currently prohibited in this zone district. And so our initial hope is that this does two of the things. It adds the opportunity for additional housing units in our highest density and next use zone district. And knowing that there are certain kind of overarching standards that, that may make a challenge in certain areas. The other aspect is that we have, for a very long time, tried to look at different solutions to help assist and make it better some existing environmental concerns in the village of Twin Lakes. And this is an area that is platted similarly to the city of Lethal and small three lock slot kind of configuration. However, this area is not supported by centralized infrastructure. Which means that we have the burden of trying to find solutions to adequately separate wells and septic systems. And that we have existing structures down there and aging infrastructure as far as existing septic systems that are in need of replacement. And so we look to potentially vacate property lines and consolidate lots and, and look to providing a shared septic system. The code doesn't allow that because they are zoned business and you cannot have. Further, we would suggest that a conditional use permit to be able to add a second or additional more than one accessory drawing unit, a second or maybe more than two accessory drawing units could be a possible outcome specific to the business. As long as there is ecological or social benefit. That would be a requirement as a finding specific to accessory drawing units when. So in all other zone districts, then the county where accessory drawing units are allowed, you can have no more than one. However, because of, you know, these different concerns, both housing and environmental concerns in the village, it could potentially make sense if we could make a finding that of course would be fully vetted with public health and, and all of our different partners. The, the outcome is, is actually a better environmental situation or it's, it's a better housing outcome. So again, this is our highest density residential, a zone district next use residential zone district. So that's why this is being proposed. There are going to be certain limitations because anything that isn't on centralized utility is going to the potential of, of having to overcome the water barrier. So if they have an exempt in-house use well, it won't support the necessary law. Septic systems, of course, have to be sized appropriately to serve the additional drawing units. So there are, you still have all of those remaining criteria that every accessory drawing unit has to maintain. So they have to stay in some ownership. You couldn't come in and, and on a business personal, come in and vacate that line. Make, make the properties bigger to encompass more than one accessory drawing unit. And then split up the ownership. We all have to stay under the same ownership. And they still have to make the dimensional standards of the underlying zone district. So we have to be able to meet setbacks. They can't exceed height and they can't, it's that it's maximum lock coverage. So there's still dimensional standards that are going to control what actually, how much construction can be accommodated on the site. Of course, the district has got adequate water supply. Well, there's a unique situation in Twin Lakes. As much as we all know that this is a very historic community, that there is oftentimes where there is water ownership that predates the exempt requirements. And so they actually do have water that can support more than one drawing unit on a new located personal where we bring more drawing units on. And they have to have adequate ventilation. So utilities have to be shared. There has, there has to be fire protection consideration, making sure that we have adequate fire separation where that we have fire resistant construction. So we're going to take into account those kinds of things. You also have to consider access, that whatever we do through this and that we add additional drawing units in the business zone district, we have adequate access and parking. Although parking is another area that we're getting a little more creative in. It less in the county, more in the city, but still it may come up from time to time, especially in the business district. So that's kind of the basis. This, this, this code amendment started kind of big and then it really brought it down. Like that, you know, it kind of, I think, over emphasized what we needed to do. So you can see at the beginning of it, you know, was, we have any, we have an additional criteria in the business. You might be able to have more, more than one accessory drawing unit. But you have to have either that environmental impact that you were creating a better situation or you've got a better social outcome, potentially that it's a better housing fix. Then the only other places that I need to really amend on the table uses, of course, where we are adding it. And that the number, sorry, go off in the code, you can only have one, but in the business you can potentially have more than one. And I think if you want to continue scrolling down to, then I have some S's. You know, so, so that, you know, the dwelling units and the water and drawing unit. So very, I'm really excited to say that this really ended up in a very, very minor, minor change to the code. But I think it's got a really big positive impact overall. So it started off, as you all remember, when we first started this, I was very worried. Kind of all over the place. And I'm hoping that we really got into the heart of what we're trying to do with this. And then it actually ends up to be a very minimal code amendment. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Unfortunately, on this one, I don't have Michael helping me out, although I think he probably has some ideas about the fact that, you know, this, this does, this bill also helps us with the planning grants and the qualified strategies because this is adding a use, a housing use within the community. So that also has a benefit as well. So happy to answer any questions that this committee individual have. But the intent was to really kind of bring this and make it as simple as possible.
Do we have any public that wants to speak on this subject matter?
I'm encouraged by it and she's thinking of two properties that we have in Twin Lakes. And a year ago, my wife and I moved, which I, we formed a little office and we were in the third story. So the, and of course. All of which are, are contributing all this to historic history. And one of the properties also contains a, a log building that actually housed the Lake Valley government for a few months in eighteen sixty-seven, eighteen sixty-eight. Our purpose, you know, purposely those properties was to return them to, to full-time, year-round and single family farms. And unfortunately, well, the, the situation is that none of those properties are large enough to support their own individual septic system. But together, the three can support a. In order to do that, the properties have to be consolidated. And so that's where without the ability to, to have additional drawing units there. Our intent is to, to rehabilitate those properties within the next year or the, the houses and, and all of these launching rooms.
Um, I have a hand up on. Jan, do you, if you can hear us, if you can just state your name and you can go ahead and speak.
Hi. My name is Jan Morzel. I have a property where we have a building permit on, in Twin Lakes. And so I've been involved actually for three years. And I have a specific question because I had not read the code as proposed. And that has to do with the requirement that that your well permit allows that. And I'm looking at my own well permit. And of course, it says that the, that the use is limited to ordinary household purposes inside one single family dwelling. But it then it does allow that we can pump at least up to fifteen gallons per minute. And so let me back up a little bit. First of all, I, I totally support what, what is being proposed and it's very necessary. But I wonder whether that can be eliminated. I guess I look at it in the, in the big picture that here as well as in other counties, you, the house sizes that are being built are just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. They're getting gigantic and genormous, I would say. If on the other hand, you allow current owners or even new builders to have two units. You still, like Anne explained, are limited to lot coverage and building height and so forth. So, you know, to look at it in a simple way, instead of having one, you know, 3,000 square foot house, you get one, whatever, 1,500 and another thousand. So you create actually more living abilities. And that totally speaks to affordability, whether that allows now the owner to actually have a long-term renter or maybe a short-term renter or a mother-in-law versus having these gigantic, and they're mostly, you know, part-time houses. So it makes it actually more affordable, not just for people looking for rental opportunities, but also for people that want to build on a shoestring like I want. And in our case, of course, we have an approved septic system in, in which there's a pump that will actually record how much water we are using that goes back in the septic system. So we could actually at any time show how much water we are using. And maybe there can be language that you can't use more than an ordinary household. Because nowadays with all the water efficiency features and if somebody is conscientious, you would stay way below what is actually allowed right now by the, by the county health department for a single bedroom where two people live, namely. I think it's 150 gallons a day for a couple. So I'm wondering.
Jan, I want to interrupt you just for one second. So the county doesn't regulate the wells, the state does. So the state is the one with those requirements. So we don't have any jurisdiction on changing the regulations for those only serving one single family dwelling.
Well, I wonder if it's at least possible that you don't even refer to it, but let us contact the Water Resource Division and ask them whether, what their intention is. Are they really, because if they say single family, it almost is like, well, are you now talking about zoning? Or are you not worried about having too much water pumped? And like I said, they say you can pump up the, up to fifteen gallons per minute. That's impossible to consume, of course. And if they're just concerned about the water consumption, maybe I could contact them and say, hey. and say, hey, I'm going to show you every month how much water I use and will I comply? And if you guys are okay with that, that would make it easier. Of course, I understand these are different jurisdictions, but I wonder if, if your intention is to allow for more units or, or accessory units, why not just leave it up to the Colorado Division of Water Resources or then the homeowner to say, well, is there a way around it? Or are you simply restricted to a single family home? Like I said, you can have a gigantic six thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand square foot house and consume gigantic amounts. And I guess they would be okay with that. So that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
And the verbiage does just say adequate water supply. So.
Right, right. So, you know, um, kind of continuing in the exact same thing that Heather said, we don't have any authority to make the, you know, those calls and, and we do have to require that it does have an adequate water supply. And so then that falls on the Division of Water Resources to really, you know, address any concern that you have because they're very definitive in what constitutes a single, an in-house use and a dwelling unit. I don't think that they would consider those, but those are conversations that would best be had with the division. I don't anticipate there would be any movement on that, but we, we have to require an adequate water supply. But then we defer to the Division of Water Resources to quantify what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other comments or questions?
Just, uh, following up on Jan's question, uh, question, our well was built in nineteen fifty, sixty nine, three years. Apart from that well would use for all three apartments. And so we are grant bonded in and, uh, and, uh, presented from the state. And we have added.
Great. So, um, and that's not the only situation, you know, that we've come across in nineteen seventy-two was when the exempt status came into play. And, and there are a, a number of, uh, wells in the county that we've come across that predate that. And they are able to support beyond what the, what is a true function. So, um, yes, Mr. Spider is, is very fortunate to have that situation. But it, but it allows us to, uh, to, to bring these solutions to the village. And I think I mentioned that public health base is very, what am I thinking? And Jackie came to one of our workshops to share that.
Any other questions on this code amendment from commissioners or planning commissioners?
As are unique between lakes, of course. The ones that's in effect, it's on the whole county. You visualize any other places in the county that could use this saying, the whole town?
Yes, anything that's within the business zone district that aren't centralized utilities. And so when I was here, um, I had kind of a map. I think we shared it during our work session to just kind of see, there are some areas within the business zone district that are on centralized utilities. So it would definitely open up the opportunities within any of those. Um, and so there's, there's definitely areas beyond Twin Lakes.
So it's useful county.
Yeah, yeah, yes. The intent was that it needed to be, um, a good tool for the whole county.
There, and I think that's why we kind of really drafted this to make it a little bit more. Uh, Jamie?
Thanks Heather. I want to thank staff for putting together this report. I think it is great as is, and I'm relatively new here. So I did want to ask in the spirit of helping to solve this urgent crisis of housing as quickly as possible, obviously adding ADUs to the business zone adds an amount of units. I know that other communities have done things such as not limit parcels to having one ADU or removing certain dimensional limitations so that parcels can be more creatively fit. I don't know if that's germane to this conversation, but I was just curious if that's something we've talked about and if we're going to change this piece of ADUs. If it makes sense to do that, maybe we've talked about it before, but I'm down with this even just as it is.
We did talk about, a little bit about expanding on the ADU conversation at our, at our last meeting that we talked about this on. And so I think that there are further discussions. This just addresses the business zone district for now to get that off the ground for, for the existing potential applicants. But yes, I think there, I agree that there are further discussions that can be had on the ADU conversation in other zone districts.
Um, I think maybe you have a definition of ADU because I think the definition in chapter nine or adjacent lot of personal to primary. Um, or just make a comment for. Okay, so what each, so the definition of accessory dwelling unit, um, in chapter nine of the accessory building structure or use subordinate building structure, narrowly incidental and subordinate in function to the principal building structure or use on location. Or use and location on the scene or in a jointing lot. In chapter nine, it will be a. Just, it's just a cleanup thing. Yeah, I, uh, this is actually, um, this was a poll for the minute when we added this accessory building. I'm not sure why. Thank you for that catch. I did not know I was there, so thank you. Okay, I will, um, I will clean that up. Thank you for that. So I would just, um, some of the, all of that information just to, uh, address change in chapter nine definition. And then I just want to, per the talk about not being able to subdivide and some of the well exemption opportunities that we see, do we, an environmental health support of the cluster system concept? Do you think that we really need to add some sort of deed restriction or deed junk or something like that to anything like this so that we don't have that happen one year, five years? I think it's an interesting way to, um.
I mean, if they, if it's already built and they have to go through subdivision process, the current subdivision regulations would require them to have individual access. Like it would be hard, a lot harder to make the mistakes that have happened before. You know what I mean? Once you have two houses actually already built or whatever, two units already built, it'd be a lot harder to say, this is how I want to.
And they have to be able to meet minimum lot size and they have to. So going backwards is always, you know, once you consolidate a lot, generally you're not going to need the minimum lot consolidated at the minimum lot in, in the recreational school or as if you're in business. That'd be five hundred, I think, or five thousand, maybe it's five thousand square feet. It is the smallest dimensional standard that we have. So, but, but you would have to go through a fully vetted process to try to subdivide back where most likely you'd have to do a lot of optimization plan. We don't let infrastructure cross property lines.
You just think it'd be harder to make the error.
It's really, really difficult backwards. It's kind of, you know, we always kind of caution people when you do lot consolidations, you have to kind of look at all the barriers that it would be to go backwards. You didn't consolidate, but once you've done that, it's really hard to, um, sort of subdivide. They need to stay in single ownership because no one would subdivide. We catch it there and say, this has to be a single ownership.
Right. Oh, Michael, have a. Oh, go ahead, Michael.
Hey, I'm sorry to do this to you and throw a little bit of a wrench in here, but has there been any discussion about limiting occupancy to permanent residents or one of the two units being occupied as a permanent resident? And I bring that up only in the vein of having seen some of these units become vacation rentals and whether or not that that's something that if you're going to be looking at the definition, um, we've seen the, the communities that I've been involved in have limited ADUs, new, new ADUs to, um, only long-term rentals or permanent residency. So I don't know if that's something that you want to discuss or not, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
No, I think that's really, we have, we did start having that conversation that we wouldn't allow short-term rentals, um, within the, and, and so we have been having a work session talking about, um, short-term rentals. And one of the first thoughts was, um, not allowing short-term rentals within ADUs.
But I think there's still some conversation about that. I think that's part of the future ADU conversation though, um, that we decided that we would have. And there was still plenty of opposition to that. Is there any, like, to that point though?
I had a question.
Hang on just a second, please. If we had a, if we had a business that submitted for initial use permit because they wanted to build a whole house. I mean, I guess the initial use permitting, we would say that, okay, your intention is to house your employees not to create a second business on your commercial property to be employed. Yeah, I mean, and I, I'm a huge proponent of what Michael's saying about making ADUs only long-term vehicles, but I know that there was hesitancy, I mean, amongst you guys to not do that. So I think that it's a future conversation, but that's, that's a, that's a good piece of it. So for this application, Steve, go ahead.
Uh, I, I guess I have to agree with Steve Erickson at Twin Lakes. I guess I have to agree with Michael that I find it interesting that on your agenda that you would be speaking about trying to create more employee housing and looking at, uh, making employee housing easier to do and at the same time, uh, talking about ADUs, which, uh, most likely an ADU, uh, would turn into a short-term rental since it's probably the highest and best use for any piece of property. So I see a, a big contradiction here with talking about employee housing and then creating ADUs which would, uh, exacerbate the, uh, housing shortage.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I know, I don't think that conversation's over. I'm just not sure that we can solve it and solve this code amendment at the same time. So I think it's a separate conversation unless people feel like they wouldn't feel comfortable passing this without continuing that conversation. Any additional conversation questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to close this public hearing for file twenty-two dash fourteen? Okay, all in favor of closing public hearing twenty-two dash fourteen? All right.
All right.
Uh, any opposed? Okay. Again, we'll move to file twenty-two dash eleven, which is the SCO site plan review, SCO state of first scenic conservation overlay. Applicant has requested the file be tabled until June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two to continue discussions with CDOT. Um, I don't know that I need to open public hearings, so I think we just need to entertain a motion to table file twenty-two dash eleven to June thirteenth.
I'll make, I'll make motion to file twenty-two dash fifteen?
Twenty-two dash eleven.
Twenty-two dash eleven, June fifteenth?
Okay. On favor of tabling file twenty-two dash eleven to June thirteenth? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We can now let the commissioners on their way. Public, you're welcome to stay and listen. We just can't entertain any more public comment. And we will go back and start deliberation on file twenty-two dash thirteen. Um, we give two minutes for the commissioners to leave.
Yeah. It's worthwhile.
Oh, is it not the draft?
I just, uh, what the students I heard, he's coming from, he had his, uh, he's a, 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 he's
That should even have the most lot. Principal use.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that, that's the, right? Of course, and that is true, but it's true.
Need a wheel or not?
I need a wheel, though. It gets nasty. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
You can, you can stay till, um, adhere the recommendation.
You can get it off that easy.
If you would like, uh, if you have that, it's in the, the motion about.
Yeah. I'll read the motion in the next. Okay, um, please, we're going to go ahead. Somebody's making the motion that Anne's going to read. Yeah. So if you want to make it, then I'll have somebody say so much. Okay, then, yeah.
Um, I move the planning commission recommend applicable file number twenty-two thirteen, the code amendment to sections three, eleven point three C, fifteen point one, three eleven three H eight, six point one point two I, six point one point fifteen O, and chapter nine definitions with the following additions and corrections. Under item six point one point one five O, the language shall read, affordable housing plans, the beauty plan shall comply with one or more of the following. Additionally, correction two. Item number six shall read, other innovative, creative development proposals that meet critical housing needs in the community. An additional change to chapter nine, under workforce housing, the definition shall read, deed restricted housing intended to serve permanent residents of Lake County who meet eligibility criteria related to employment within Lake County. And shall add under chapter nine, a definition to affordable housing. And thus recommend these to the board of county commissioners and that a resolution be prepared to memorialize the decision making the following findings. A, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, and other provisions of the Lake County comprehensive plan and this code. And B, the proposed amendment is necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts, or other social or economic conditions. Hence, the proposal is with the best interest of the health, safety, and general welfare of the general public.
So.
For a second on the motion. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
I I don't mean to be nitpicky, but the definition that Michael had for the workforce housing at the end did have or an adjacent county. And I.
We discussed that we didn't add that.
I didn't, and this is probably a issue of a hybrid meeting, but. So I just want to point that out. I can vote hard.
But I think we pointed that out, but then Heather had the continuation of discussion about concerns that we don't have the adjacent communities contributing to our housing needs. And that the guidelines do include and and add consideration for workers in adjacent towns.
They else have any thoughts on that as far as whether they would like to see that changed?
It's just the downstream effect. I guess I don't necessarily understand, like, if that isn't like, I understand the tiers and I understand that that's also in here. So is this just a this just isn't consistent? Or this?
It's an alternative, basically. It's it's more so if anything under six, but it would be another option. If somebody wanted to provide a an option that did not fall under the Lake County housing guidelines, which has the tiered system and ties directly to AMIs. Then, but maybe they wanted to come to us and said, well, I'm going to create an apartment complex that's only for Lake County employees. We may say, yeah, sign us up. But maybe it's not going to meet requirements for the other guidelines. So this just allows, I guess the way I'm looking at it is allows another option that promotes trying to house our employees. But the other six items up above still do not preclude those from working for any any community. All commuter type housing.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I'm gonna do, I feel like roll call vote may be easier and a little bit more formal for file recommendations. So I'll go through roll call. Power trips. Abby Domon.
Yeah, I vote in favor.
Joey Edwards.
Yeah. I.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have file twenty-two dash fourteen conditionally adding ADUs to the business.
Does there change?
There was a tiny change and a big change would be Anne's correcting Chapter nine definition, correcting Chapter nine definition.
Brutal.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. I move the Planning Commission recommend approval of file number twenty-two fourteen, according limit to section five point three. Actually, three point six point three conditional use permits and cleaning up and correcting Chapter nine definition accessory dwelling units to the Board of County Commissioners and that a resolution be prepared to memorialize the decision made following finding. A, the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, and other provisions of the Lake County and this code, and B, the proposed amendment is necessary because of changing social values, new planning concepts, or other social or economic conditions, and C, the proposal is within the best interests of the health, safety, and general welfare of the general public.
So move.
May I get a second?
Second.
Have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will call again. Cartra.
Yeah.
Abby Domon.
Yeah.
Joey Edwards.
Yeah.
Lupe Bobedia.
Yay.
And yay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda was just some conversation on Planning Commission expectations and process. So I don't know, Jamie, this kind of came stemmed from your correspondence. I don't know if you want to start off the conversation?
Sure, yeah. First, I just want to say I appreciate that everybody is open to this. Obviously, I'm new here. Obviously, communication via email is different than in-person communication. So I welcome this opportunity to have a more of a dynamic discussion. And, yeah, I mean, long story short, I feel like the work of this commission and the reason why I joined is so crucial. It does not just change things tomorrow, but it changes things for longer than most other things do. And as a result, I think we just have a duty to our citizens to be as dialed and as efficient as possible. And again, in my very few meetings, it just didn't feel like we were all committed to that. And I I want to say that, like, maybe that's just the vibe of how this thing is. And if so, I'm totally happy to chill out. We could have soft start times. There's just like a more loose agreement. But it would in the onboarding, there was no clear kind of expectations. And I've just seen a lot of meetings and ours are different from other meetings I've been to. So, yeah, I don't know that I have any particular asks, although I can make a few things up. But how does everybody feel? I guess would be how what my question would be to everybody. Because I I appreciate that I'm an impatient nitpicky guy. Maybe nobody wants to hear this from me, and that's totally fine. But how do other people feel would be my question?
Go ahead, John.
I think a lot of what we do involves more moving parts than some of the other committee meetings, maybe which attend here in Lake County. And I think a big part of things not working on things forward as efficiently as we should is because we're still in hybrid mode. Being able to come and be in person really makes a huge difference. Not only for input sake, but also for efficiency sake. Certainly understand what you're saying, but we are dealing with several different agencies every single time. And there are a lot of moving parts. It does sometimes slow the process down.
Okay. I my comment is that to serve the public. I mean, and sometimes there gets a lot of what the public wants and what they don't want. And we have to make some hard decisions here. So we get to listen to everything that comes before us. And maybe we do get most generally, I think we're pretty much on the ball. And far as time, we refer to your email. Time, everybody's time is important. It's true. But we we give volunteer. We know we're not getting time it takes to do, we're going to do it. And I thank you for your your comments also.
I I guess I would certainly welcome, like, you know, more opportunity around training on what the Planning Commission does, what its role is, where we I know I've talked about this before, but just thinking about like, you know, making sure that we understand our role, but then also that the public understands our role as well, too. Kind of where those, you know, final where decision-making lies in any any of the instances. And I think that could help, too, if if there was a conversation, you know, we had talked about ADUs. But just around like, what are some of those bigger items that we want to tackle outside of reviewing and actively and use files? You know, certainly a lot of affordable housing conversations have come up and and, yeah, to strategically use our time, I think, you know, on those those weeks where we don't have actively and use files, it'd be awesome if, you know, we we put the time in to kind of work through a list of these are the other items that we want to hit on. I think we're still kind of coming off of the backcountry zoning. Have you left too? So so, yeah, I guess that would be my two cents on it. I I think it's always, I think, more learning opportunities and more time that we have together will will make us more effective over time, so.
Yeah, and Abby, on the last meeting, that is kind of what we talked about is we need to get together at our next work session and bring ideas for things. You know, the commissioners have some priorities. I think we need to think of our priorities and get together and brainstorm that list of things that, because there's a lot that we can do, but there's only so much we can do with the actual pending applications. So the idea from the last meeting was to pull together some of those thoughts so that we do have structured kind of work sessions. I think the you know, in 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 reading some of these emails, I I do feel they were a little aggressive. I feel in some instances, a little bit not super, didn't feel super respectful, but I think the idea, you know, I definitely realized that I've made some mistakes as far as running things and maybe making the expectation that there is a hard stop at six o'clock. Because there isn't in this definitely not a situation. That's always something that we just aim to do. Because I think everybody kind of gets burned out after two hours, but it's definitely not. I know I didn't mean to portray that as an expectation that most of these meetings will end at six o'clock. There are going to be several that come up that, well, I mean, I've been in these meetings till midnight before. We try not to do that anymore because I think it becomes an effect. It's happened. So it's it it's situations that you have to kind of work together and really try to control. And I do hope that our work sessions are very expansive and maybe aren't very narrow focused. Because I think that's when we get the best work done is when we're kind of all over the place in those work sessions. I'm definitely open to feedback from others on that. But I think overall, we want work sessions such as the last few meetings to be more expansive than the one liner that's on the agenda. I think I think we need that. I think that that's where you get to utilize the talent that's on the board is really understanding different perspectives and different things that people want to see addressed on the planning mission. Especially when it comes to, you know, deciding what our priority list is going to be in the next coming months. I think the I think the idea that you know, and in I I I apologize that I was late to the last meeting, but I think it's better than not being here at all, and I didn't have a choice. And so I think that that's where people, and I want that to be the flexibility that everybody here has. I would rather you show up 20 minutes late than not show up at all if you can be here 20 minutes late and add to the conversation. And I talked briefly with two of the commissioners as well about some of this, and and they really felt like or they portrayed to me the feeling that having the conversations on the fire and some of those things. If we need to add that to the agenda, that there's an update section or something like that, I think it's really crucial that the commissioners, the public, the planning commission members, if anybody has anything or is involved in a group outside of this group that's working on things that are going to be relevant to what we're doing. We've got to talk about it. It's got to be, there's got to be things that we are then able to use that information and and determine if we need to switch our priorities or add them to our priorities or what that looks like. And I think we have to be an ever-evolving group as far as what we're working on, but those growing too fast for us to not be willing to do that. And so I think we have to be able to take some of those. So some of those things. Updates that aren't on the agenda, things like that, like I think those are going to be an inevitable piece to this planning commission and to the structure of it. In and we have been loose as far as not making that, you know, line item on the agenda. And so we can certainly look at things like that to to make it seem, you know, and and feel a little bit more organized in that way. But one thing that I think well is instead of spending a lot of time analyzing minutes in a meeting, I think we're spending a lot of time discussing and conversing about strategies and ideas and things like that that really do help end up directing us, which I know it's still new-ish, but I think it is going to direct us and help create that knowledge that we need for future applications and future processes that we're working on. Those are the many kind of points I wanted to make to that. And Lupe, I know I forgot to give you a chance before I spoke, so I apologize.
No worries, Heather. No, I just wanted to say briefly that I appreciate the hard work that everyone does for the commission. And as well, that's like, I appreciate the flexibility. So Jamie, to your point, yeah, like in an ideal world at four PM, but sometimes like life happens. I am a diversity director at at a school. And so just like working through issues about like diversity and race and in the school, like I get on calls. And so sometimes it's like having that flexibility is important. I think there are moments where it could be more critical, like that expectation of just like public hearing or something that we're voting on that being on time because there's public in there would be great. But like, I think we are all coming from different backgrounds, and it's, I think it's important for us. And I think that's the beauty of the the commission of just like us coming from different backgrounds and coming with different expertise and we're bringing things to the table. And it's also like a volunteer opportunity. And I think like any time that there is an opportunity to be part of the community and to be part of our community and having these discussions is important. So, yeah, like I I Heather, I know you're apologizing, but I feel like it's on all of us, like I apologize as well, like if I need to ask, I need to ask questions as well, like what are the expectations and and whatnot? So I I just really wanted to say, like, I appreciate everyone and your time and the the effort you put in. I'm more of like a flexibility person, and so it's just just adapting to whatever the needs are, just like the conversations that occur in the commission.
Thank you. And just as your staff, some of my takeaways would be that oh, you brought up a really great point, and we all know that we spend every kind of work session opportunity that we've had since the beginning of the year, almost working on backcountry. You know, normally we would have started the year off with some goal setting and some prioritization of a work plan and and unfortunately, spent the majority of that time working on backcountry. And so now we do have this opportunity, like we talked about, that the board has developed a priority list for land use staff that we would love to start now having a conversation and start kind of catching up to where you know, normally you probably would have been beginning of the year. And the other thing is the DOLA trading. Some of you have been through the DOLA treaty, but I I need to continue to bug them because I thought it would be something I could get access to very quickly. And I'm sure DOLA is just like all the rest of us. There's been a lot of changes in departments and new staffing and old staff leaving. And I know DOLA is by that, just like so many departments. So I need to continue to try to create that space to have that opportunity. It's a great presentation. It really does talk about the fundamentals of of being on a planning commission and the work.
To have that opportunity. It's a great presentation. It really does talk about the fundamentals of, of being on the planning commission and the work. And it's a really great. They have not given me any definite. Aren't able to do that, but I'm going to follow up and, and see if we can get fixed. That would really help. Provide some support. And yes, I, I think we all feel flexibility. I know that I've had a couple of instances again, you know, the mighty department of three. Occasionally there have, this year's been a little challenging, some things have come up. So I appreciate that flexibility that you're talking about, Lupe and Howard and everybody's kind of spoken to. So I do recognize that that can be really difficult at times, but I so appreciate your support. Because sometimes if, and I'm your staff, I'm it and Marla, thank gosh, without her, I, I don't know how I would do anything. But you know, just thank you so much for the support that you provide to me. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and the flexibility. So as much as that probably does create some heartburn sometimes, it is so. Staff and try to provide as best level of support that the community deserves and certain that all of you as a planning commission deserve. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Anne, and thank you, everybody. It's, it's great to hear all of these thoughts. And you know, I'm sorry if I offended anybody with my bold emails. That, that was not my intent, I think, to the conversation about hybrid meetings. There's a different feel to even be virtual. And yeah, also like, I'm not the most tactful guy, so that just might have been out of line. And by the same token, like I said, you know, it sounds like flexibility is desired by lots of people. So if that just means we start sometimes later, that is cool for me to hear explicitly. I am totally happy to chill out about that. As everybody was talking, I did write down just a couple of notes about, you know, actual practical things that maybe we choose to agree upon to do or not. You know, like the meeting thing, timing wise, sounds like everybody prefers flexibility. That's totally cool with me. I'll block out two plus hours and that's totally fine. I think to Abby's point about what we do on the days off, and Anne was mentioning some training as well. Maybe we could agree that commissioners spend one hour on off weeks on training or doing some other projects. Or we, we could just come up with a number that feels right to everybody and have a requisite amount of, of training or work. You know, Anne, I appreciate how hard you work with your small staff. If you need more staff, we can go to bat for you. I don't exactly know what the process is to get the county to hire more people, but I feel like that's an adequate role. If you need more support in that regard, whatever the process is, that seems like something we could advocate for. And then I just want to mention, I feel like. There's a little bit sometimes, I appreciate there's flexibility, but that we do tend to lose focus sometimes. And all due respect to our Board of County Commissioners and how hard they work. Again, today, it, it felt like they were asking questions about a hypothetical that was already kind of being covered. And we spent like many, many minutes talking about a piece of process. That was easily resolved. And again, maybe that's a them thing. Maybe that's just a me thing. Maybe that's how this process works. And we just need to talk and think at the same time. But I wonder what we can do to educate people and to maybe guide some of our discussion more about like. Is the thing that we are talking about right now also the thing we're voting on? And again, I think that's hard because some of being flexible is having these tangents and side conversations. And maybe we do want to add it and maybe we do want to put it on our timeline. But maybe there's also a world in which we're just strictly talking about a very tiny thing and we'll talk about the rest later. Any of those things we could do or not do or whatever. And again, I really appreciate everybody's dedication here. Like I said, I'm choosing to volunteer my time because I think the work we're doing is worthy and important and serves literally everybody in our county. So I, I appreciate kind of hearing repeatedly that flexibility is a part of this. And yeah, I'm happy to be included here. And like I said, I will do my best to chill out a little bit. And I'm also open to feedback. I hope, you know. In this conversation and emails or whatever, people are welcome to reach out to me individually and give me a piece of their mind if they want. I'm still happy to take you out to coffee. I haven't even met some of you in person yet. So it'd be nice to get to know all of you a little bit more. And again, thank you just for taking the time to have this process discussion.
I think the training is going to be a big piece to help. I know this is some conversations I've had with Joey too, that just really understanding the nuts and bolts of how this county works, I think is super helpful and what our roles are going to be. And maybe that will help a little bit with the understanding of the process and needing it to be somewhat flexible. So I would definitely say that that's a good goal for us.
Coming to your email originally, Jamie, I could understand the stress in your email. Because at least three of us are brand new and cold to this process. And the rest of you have been doing this for a very, very long time. And the stress to try to catch up and understand what's going on is, is very high. So the extra training and being. All these different conversations will really help us understand what's going on week to week, but help us understand the bigger goal as well. It's that it is frustrating and stressful at first, just trying to keep up, so.
I can understand that. The other thing I'm going to just bring up briefly is that we have developed a community development team. Which I think is really exciting. It's got all of the review agencies locally on edge as well as districts like local. Sheriff, it has motions and management directors going to be on it. All of the. Vocal input that really helps us with the development applications coming in, meeting at the table with. Applicants from the very start. So we had our first meeting on something that's coming up. And, and a counterpart to that is that I'm working on whatever we call a development checklist. That I want the planning commission and the board of county commissioners to have a voice in that same room when we're meeting with developers. Once you did, to elevate the things that you want them to be cognizant of, the things that are on everybody's radar right now. This is kind of their first time to come in, meet with staff, meet with the review agencies. And we want to make sure that we're painting the story of our community and what those priorities are. And what kind of things that we want to see out of development, things that we want to keep hotness of. So we'll be reaching out and we might be able to include that in one of our work sessions. Going to look to start that development checklist with the board, bringing it to the planning commission to add your voices in that as well. So that we're really getting out, development is coming incredibly fast and very big. And so we want to make sure that we are doing really good engagement. Very stark, so. Lot of opportunity on the education. Help me and Tim can help me reaching out to DOLA to just prioritize how much the training is going to work to get done. And so maybe we can kind of elevate our ass to, to see if they can get in and help us follow up. Any other thoughts or questions or comments? On that, and I think that's it. If there's anything else, I think we can make a motion to adjourn.
I would make a motion to adjourn tonight, yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everybody. See ya. You.